Good afternoon. Welcome to the work session for the Really Evans School District 6 Board of Education. Today is September 11th, 2023. We'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campus Fitzy.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood. Director Pappas.
Present.
Director Sullivan. Five board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. First up on our agenda tonight is our, this afternoon anyway, is our Board of Education upcoming event. So take a look at that and see what we have coming up. We do have a school visit tomorrow. And we have convocation on the 25th. It's the next big thing that's happening. Board, board meeting on the 25th. Another school visit to Jefferson on the 28th. The Greater Great Education Colorado Luncheon on the 4th. And that finishes out September. I don't know if we need to go any further than that. They did, um, did want to point your attention to October 20th, Evans State of the City Address. They did move that from the 13th to the 20th just for us because we have the partner, business partner appreciation breakfast on the 13th. So, um, I think they moved it just for us.
That's what the email said.
Anyway, so anything else that, that we need to be aware of on our agenda? Upcoming events?
President Matthews, I'll just remind everyone about a couple of things. In this past weekly bulletin, Amy has asked for you to RSVP around Casby and those associated events around Casby. So we can plan accordingly for that if you can respond to that, that information. And then also I believe that the information for feedback from my evaluation is due.
Wednesday.
Wednesday of this week. So if you haven't had a chance to finish that, you'll want to finish that up as well. Amy, was there anything else we wanted to remind them of tonight?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Please do get those evaluations to me on Wednesday. Next up on our agenda is the overview, review and next steps. And that's for I-2030. Dr. Pilch, I'll hand it over to you to give us that update.
Thank you so much. And Dr. Dattery is making her way over here. I, I had asked Dr. Dattery and the team to take the lead on this presentation tonight. And I'll just, I'll just preface it with normally you would receive this information in a half day or part of a full day work session. But because of some complexities with schedules, we really felt like we needed to get it in front of you and, and make, you know, make it work tonight. So the information may be a little more higher level than what you've seen in the past. So we do want to take your questions. And if there's areas that you want us to go deeper, we'll certainly come back and do that with you all. Or you can schedule with us individually with Stacy and me or, or any of the team with me. And we can go a little bit deeper with you. What you're going to see tonight is the work that is really the big work of this coming school year. So we won't really be giving you a review of the work that has occurred. That's those I-2030 updates that we do at each board meeting typically. Those, those updates are letting you know how we're doing along the way and then the data that we're keeping track of and the measurements along the way. But what we want you to see tonight is really the big work going forward this school year. And then of course, we want to hear from you if there's some pieces that you're wondering about that might be missing. We, we did begin to launch some work with our district leadership team this month where we, we had them review the plan and give us feedback on different groups of them on different sections for any possible changes or revisions or additions or, or just tweaking of the plan. So we, we do see the possibility of, of revising this version of Enovation 2030 as we go through the next several months. So the next time we would print, we might see some revisions in it. So tonight would be a good opportunity for you, you to ask us if you think there are pieces that you want to make sure that we do have included in the plan. What you won't see are the, you know, the, the detailed tasks of the plans. I mean, what you'll see are the, the big, the big work, the big outcomes. And then the detail of the tasks is the work of, of those action planning groups. We're happy to share some of that with you if you're more curious as you hear about certain sections tonight. And we did dedicate most of the work session to this work because we do think, and this is the big work of the school district right here. This is our guiding document, our guiding principle for the work we do and, and for the work that the team all around us does all of the time. And so we wanted to get it in front of you as we start this school year and, and get in front of you with a presentation. So with that, I'll pass it to you, Dr. Dattery, to kick us off. And then some of the other team will be joining too as, as we go along.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. As you know, our, our mission and our vision, just to remind us all, this is what our, what we're deeply rooted in. This is our work and this is what gives us direction. And we read this and we talk about this at every one of our updates. And so we wanted to share that. And I think it's really important. And I, you know, people really talk about our values and beliefs a lot around in, in our work. And that this really guides who we are and what we believe in. And that came from the board. When this, when I-2030 and former I-2020 was created, this was the work of the board to say, this is what we believe and this is who we are. And that's something I think that just really is good to remind ourselves of. We also know that we have four main focus areas. And so as Dr. Pilch was saying, we're going to go into each one of those at a little more depth and really talking about, well, what is the work of this year to drive toward the big outcomes that we know we're going to achieve in the next few years? So we'll break each one of these down and we'll start with student learning and achievement. As we know, District 6 engages all students in a challenging and personalized education, preparing each student to be career and college ready. And I just want to say in each one of these, while these are words that we say and might seem glib or just those words that you hear all the time, these are really very meaningful for us. And I believe you'll see in the actions that we are driving toward this every single day. And I hear it in the language of our principal leadership as well as teacher leaders as well. So goal one, goal one, excuse me, is about providing that personalized learning experience so that all of our students graduate on time and are career and college ready. So that is broken down into two objectives. The first objective is to meet those grade level requirements and graduation competencies. And these are the outcomes that align to that. Now, this is one of those where so much of it crosses over. It's very hard to get super discrete because this leads to this, leads to this. And so, and, and it's this K-12 alignment that we're looking at. So we know we need third graders to do well on math and ELA. That is that first indicator. We know we need to have on time graduation rates and we need to continue to increase that. And then there's a few more that I'll get to in a minute. So in order to get to this, we say, Lynn, children, our students need to have that goal setting mentality, that ownership and autonomy over their learning alongside the work that's happening. So this is all a part of a personalized learning plan that we are working on district wide. And this first one really rolling out this year, again, thinking as Dr. Pilch said, these are the 23, 24 actions that we will just share with you at a high level. In the elementary grades, you'll see this is the work at the elementary and particularly at these four as it's just beginning to roll out around this goal setting aspect. Try it out. Make sure it works before we scale it up to all of the schools. Same thing at the middle level. This next bullet is about implementing career exploration tools. So the middle school students include the development of that, ensure that we have that four-year plan of study beginning in the middle level, not waiting until they're in high school, but really beginning that at the middle level. Again, starting at Brentwood, get that PLP strongly in place with this element as well and then scale it up. And then at high school, which is where we started this work last year, is really making sure that that personalized learning plan has that focus on graduation, on that course completion success for students. And there is high degree of student monitoring within that. And that's actually happening at every single one of our high schools. While there's three comprehensive, there's two other unique high school experiences, but this personalized learning plan is consistent throughout. So you can see this idea of starting small at each of these levels, getting it right, scaling it up and, and moving it out. So that in this following year, the following year, fall of 2024, we really are able to scale this district wide to all students. So those are the actions Dagan and team are working on diligently. And then the second objective.
Can I just interrupt for a second? Did you want us to wait until this is done or if we have questions?
Well, we can do it either way, Ms. Pappas, however you'd like. I certainly am going to stop Dr. Dattery at the end of goal one.
Each.
And, and the first goal and have an opportunity for discussion at that point. But if something's got you stuck right now, just ask the question.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
We can go goal by goal then.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. So this is, like I said, there's two objectives in this. The second objective is around that really specifically career. And this is the work of Jenny Schilling, really leading this and her team. Which is also about personalized learning plans. And that's why I was saying there's all this crossover because it, this whole idea of driving towards something bigger than just, you know, yes, you want an A on this class or you want to do well on that assignment. But it's about this bigger outcome and driving toward bigger goals of career and college pathway success. So Jenny and her team doing an incredible job of providing that true career pathway exposure at all grade levels. And really thinking this year about, okay, it's good. We need to do this work at high school. What does that look like at middle level and even into the elementary grades? And so really beginning more specific that work in that area. And then always engaging and collaborating with multiple industry partners. This is ongoing work. It's not new work, but it is ever-present work for them to keep that going and stay at the, you know, right where they need to be with the industry partners. And then also this third one about providing multiple options for students to think about, well, these are the graduation requirements, making sure that they are meeting or exceeding those. And that that's all a part of that on time graduation rates. Making sure kids are successful and ready for the workforce demands, for college readiness and for, for all those things. So that's goal one around personalized learning plans. So before I go to goal two, what questions might you have?
That, that career exploration, I think it was like you, you gave that Brentwood example of the four-year plan. So in middle school, the middle schools are, the middle schoolers are sitting down and like laying out their four years of high school? Is that what that means?
They're taking that interest inventory and really looking at, Dagan is sitting right behind you nodding because this is such his work. And so, yeah, I hope I speak to it well, but you can just chime in, Dagan, and, and speak to that. Beginning of that work is really happening at the middle level.
But doing that interest inventory so students can begin to explore, you know, what they're interested in.
That's right.
And begin to identify possible career paths. Go ahead, Dagan.
Yeah. So they'll take a survey. They'll populate for them their top three choices based upon their interests and aptitudes. And then from there, they'll actually get to go in directly to those and start exploring the pathways. And then from there, they'll go to a tool, just like you talked about, of them starting to select classes so that they have that four-year academic plan. They can sit down with their counselors and families to work on that.
So they do that in eighth grade?
Yes.
Beginning in eighth. With a lot of exploration in that sixth and seventh grade to say, all right, starting to think about what those things look like for them.
So Dagan mentioned this a little bit, but going back to the personal learning plans. When we first started these discussions about years ago with the personal learning plans, we talked about what engagement the families would have in the development of those plans. So is it too much to ask like kind of where that is right now in this process?
No, it's not too much to ask. You're hearing her question.
Yeah, absolutely. And so right now with their plans, we're just building the system, making sure it works. Our educators, it all makes sense to our students and teachers in terms of life, the way it lays out. And then from there, our teachers and administrators are really seeing the opportunity to start having the conversation at parent teacher conferences, to really start having that conversation. So you have a student's personalized learning plan where they are with their credits and all those kinds of things. And then have a conversation about what their next steps are and then goals set with them as well.
So that seems to be more at high school or, and then so are the families have the opportunity to be engaged in the PLPs at middle and elementary as well? With the student, teacher conferences.
So a good example, that at elementary school, when they take DIBELS, so let's say a student is reading 70 words a minute and the goal for that grade level is 120. So then within the PLP, we can have that conversation and then set that goal with the family and the student. So it's set up that way. We're actually working on the implementation of NWA scores and DIBELS scores so that that can facilitate the conversation as well.
Thank you.
Jenny, is there anything you would add about career pathways, that piece?
I wonder if you should talk a little bit about our mobile lab just quickly because we didn't have that in here.
Yeah.
So we have a mobile lab that we purchased. It's 24. It's a truck that will take around to the K-8s and middle schools and for night readers to do career exploration. And it's in the process of getting, we have the materials in the process of getting it up. So we have all of the pathway work inside. It'll, the. The equipment comes out and then students will work through rotations that represents all the pathways that we have in our school district.
Thank you.
So Goal Two in student learning and achievement is really about that curriculum instruction assessment alignment and the professional learning supports that we have in place for the adults to be able to support students successfully in that area. So that there are three actual objectives in this area. There's three discrete action teams, in fact, that are really working to do this work well. So the first one is about instructional practices so that all students are successful. This outcome of educators who've been in the district for three or more years will demonstrate proficiency on the educator effectiveness standard. So that's using the educator rubric, the professional practices rubric that we utilize within the RANDA system for the evaluation process and saying, if they have been with us, they should demonstrate proficiency at minimum on that educator effectiveness standard. So these are the actions. Main actions, right, pretty, there's a lot that lives inside of these, each one of these four bullets, but the first really is implementing, that PLC stands for professional learning community at the secondary schools to ensure content mastery. And so that's really looking at what is the data telling teachers, what's, how's the system working and then informing that work so that students are successful and you're closing any gaps that they may have so that they are not only passing classes, but they are learning the mastery of the standard. So that's work that's really got kind of started last year and really much more robust and being implemented more fully this year in all of the secondary schools under Anthony's leadership. The second is around that rollout and implementation of curriculum and instruction. And this is primarily at the elementary. So we know you all adopted, found, approved the curriculum of EL and that's a very robust literacy, English Language Arts really curriculum at the elementary level. And so a lot inside of that and ensuring that not only are we implementing curriculum, but that it is instructionally sound, that they are monitoring the assessment and the learning of the students and continuing, not seeing a dip inside of that implementation, but rather just continuing to support student learning with this new curricular resource. Embedding WICER is really continues to remain a priority.
That's what WICER is, please Stacy.
So WICER stands for, so this is AVID, right? So we have AVID district-wide and this WICER is writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. So not the order I would put them in, but it does spell something. It gives the acronym, which is nice. So that's really making sure that that is in every classroom, K to 12, and that that is, you know, just a part of the conversation. And when you think PLCs, when you think about that implementation of the EL curriculum, the WICER strategies are right in there with all of that. And then truly utilizing that MTSS layer continuum, you know, we talked about that a lot and this year, the system that sits behind that to support teams and teachers to implement that well has been redesigned and that rollout of that has been very well-received and it's been very supportive of teachers and leaders to really make sure that they've got what they need and are able to support student learning and achievement. So it is multi-system, you know, tiered systems of support. That's what that MTSS stands for. But I love what that stands for. It's every part of it is, there are multiple parts and pieces to ensure student success. So supporting that. So those are really, you know, if we're thinking about what are the instructional supports to help, that, this is really all getting at that instructional side. Objective Two is about the professional development plan to support our educators. So there's a couple of things that while they will create and execute, you know, what their professional plan is, how are we supporting them as a system? And this is in addition, you know, at the building level, there's professional learning, but system-wide, there are those supports in place. And this is primarily for, right now, our certified staff, what you see on this, because we're talking about that curriculum instruction and assessment. That doesn't mean we don't have professional learning supports for the operational folks, but when we think about this goal of being in that curriculum instruction and assessment, you'll see this tailored toward that. So first is really making sure that is the PD what they're asking for and needing. Is this meeting my needs as a teacher? So let's survey and make sure, it's been a while since we've done a comprehensive survey, to really make sure that we're meeting their needs. Second is to create a proposal for what's called micro-credentiaing. You might have also heard of this badging. So it's this idea of that teachers are getting really good at, say, co-teaching. I am a co-teacher, I have been doing this well, I am, you know, you can come and watch me as a teacher do this because I do it well and I've had the training and I am able to share that with others. Doing this micro-credentiaing just ups the, this valuing of that, what they're doing in the profession. It doesn't necessarily mean that there's a whole lot else, but it does say, hey, you are somebody we could come and watch and learn from and there's a great deal of value in that. Could have more incentive structure behind that, but we're really looking at, looking at that more closely. And then thinking about what's the foundational professional development for all certified staff. So as we continue to think about all these, you know, new curriculum, new ways in which we are supporting teachers, making sure that if somebody new comes into the system in a year, two years, three years down the road, that they have that foundational training, just getting a really strong system in place for that. And Objective Three is really all about that curriculum, the standards and assessment alignment. So again, you will see that the continuing the implementation of our common assessments, K to 12, in the system in those core content areas, again, implementing PLCs at the secondary schools and complementary at the elementary, looking at that data team process to really make sure that there is content mastery. If we taught it, did they learn it? And if they didn't, what are we going to do about it to make sure they do? So it's really making sure that that's solid and in place. And then implementing effective grading practices. We've heard Mr. Osomus talk a lot about that equitable grading practices and that all students are attaining that. Again, that there's consistency across that and if we've taught it, they learn it and it's equitable work. So that is student learning and achievement Goal Two. And like I said, there's a lot inside of that with those three objectives, but one you can't really have without the other. So do you have questions around that before we move to strengthening partnerships?
I don't know if it's a question, but I, before you had gone to one of the slides, I can't remember, my question or my comment was particularly at elementary, I would guess, just with implementing pretty fairly new.
Yes.
Curriculums. And we do have a lot of new teachers.
Right.
And so as you're talking about that professional development and that, I guess, scaffolded approach, it just, it seems overwhelming just looking at it. I'm not even trying to get in the weeds, but it does seem overwhelming. And then I also wonder with that, how, how is the, how are you integrating or how is the integration happening with what we know about strategies, instructional strategies for our English language learners and how does that integrate into the curriculums? So I don't know if you can address that or talk about it a little bit?
Yeah, I think we can.
So the first thing that I would say is that within the new curriculum itself, within EL, the literacy curriculum, all, the part of why we purchased that is that that embeds within it a lot of the work that we've been working on with for English language development. So we talk about the high-yield pedagogy practices or we fondly refer to them as Hypes. Those are embedded within the curriculum. And a lot of the instructional practices, the teaching learning cycle, a lot of that work, it was just naturally in that and that's part of why we said this is, this is where, this is a curriculum that would really support, rather than trying to have teachers do all that integration on their own. It is a part of that curriculum. And so I would say that's, that is a significant lift that was already there for teachers that they didn't have to try to do on their own and that that is a part of how we looked at new curriculum to begin with. I would also tell you that the AVID strategies are very supportive of all students, including students that are learning English. So from inquiry, collaboration, ensuring that organizational pieces are there. And then of course, the reading and the writing, the discourse inside of all of that, very supportive of English language learners and that now being embedded throughout, it's not, that's more about being curriculum agnostic and just being good quality instructional practices that is, that's consistent regardless of the curriculum that we have. So those are things that we really want to make sure that we're being thoughtful about in our approach, not make it too heavy and just make sure that all of our teachers have those basic foundational things, number one, in terms of the WICER and the AVID. And then two, that the curriculum supports that work, it's not an add-on.
I would also say that the work of the instructional coaches has just gotten super tight. That work really is directed from the district level. And so although a principal is working with that instructional coach all the time on what they need in their building, I mean, the work is really clear about how do we, how we support new teachers and how we support the implementation of new curriculum. And I think we're tighter than we've ever been around that in a very good way that feels, I think, more supportive to teachers. Is it enough? No, it's never enough. I mean, there's, there's no question that there are folks who are overwhelmed, some who've been in the profession for decades and some who are brand-new to the profession. And so our job is to figure out how to continue to pile those supports in there to support folks. The other thing is our co-teaching model and the work that we've done around co-teaching in the last few years. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's gotten really tight as well around what it means to be a co-teacher and how to implement co-teaching well. And so we have three different models of co-teaching we use or two, what did Ashley talk about today?
Well, actually, there's four, but we want to get really, really good at the two-to-three of them.
Two-to-three. So that's the two-to-three around the co-teaching and so, so that our instructional coaches and our assistant principals and then also the consultants we've worked with are able to come in and work with teachers on that. So I think, you know, it's, it's just being really intentional without being, without scripting what goes on in the classroom day-to-day. Because we know that didn't work either, right?
Right.
Well, yeah, thank you for that. And then just knowing that when we think about that continuum of learning, you know, the, as you go in as a new educator and you're a novice and having to have that, getting that time and the opportunity to become a little more automatic at some of those strategies that have been around for a while, but are they automatic and have people internalize those?
And really, everybody's learning anew. They really are and they, everyone is really learning anew. And so, you know, when we get to operational organizational effectiveness, we talk about retention. That's why retention is so, so very, very important is that we are spending a lot, a lot of resources, a lot of time, a lot of work on the staff whom we have and we need to retain them. And we need to realize, my new thing is, they are not replaceable. Everybody is irreplaceable. We cannot, we cannot believe that we can continue to replace people and think we're going to get the results we want to get. We have to retain them.
Absolutely. And I would say operational organizational effectiveness, when you think about the resources that it takes to make this happen.
Yeah.
And you named those resources and we're so fortunate to have them and without them, our teachers would not feel, they're feeling overwhelmed as it is and they have a lot of support.
And if they were using 20-year-old curriculum, they're going to feel even more overwhelmed.
Exactly. Yeah. So I hear they're tired, but they like what they're doing. They really are, yeah. But it's a lot, no doubt. So we just break it down and we work alongside them to make it happen. So strengthening partnerships is one that Teresa, I don't know if you want to join me because this is ours together, that we will talk about. As we know, we can't do much of this work without strong partnerships with families, with our students, I mean, you know, it's being in partnership and with our community. And so that's what this one is all about. It also has two goals. The first goal, as I mentioned, is around strengthening relationships with parents and families. And that we have two objectives inside of this goal that we're really working and have developed, in fact, that comprehensive district-wide family partnership plan and that will be utilized at every school. And so I will talk about that in a minute as to where we are in that work. And then also to develop and implement staff training that will really help our leaders and our teachers to really partner with families effectively. But it isn't about, it's not enough to say we engage, it's really that we want to partner with, with our folks. That has a little different meaning. So these are the outcomes that are outlined in our I-2030 and it's about, you know, making sure that we are creating that, those goals and that those are in each of our annual improvement plans, in our unified improvement plans, that our families are indicating satisfaction and that our school staff are trained to effectively partner with families. So these are the main actions that we have in this area. And I would say just thank you to Luis in stepping right in. This is a strength of his and part of why we knew that he was the guy for this job and as we have brought him in with us and partnering, not only, as I say, partnership, Luis and the work that he's doing, but also with David Reyes, who has really been leading a lot of this work and has maintained some really nice continuity in this area. So where, where are we at with this? We did develop, as you know, the family partnership plan. That work was, that was done a couple of years ago, two years ago, in fact. Last year, we implemented with that Phase One set of schools that said they wanted to be those initial early adopters and implement that plan.
Dr. Dattery, I'll just, you all heard about this at your visit at the family center.
Oh, very good.
Yeah, so that's, that'll help to, you to remember the Phase One and the.
That's right.
We call them voice visits.
Oh, the voice visits.
The voice visits.
That's part of the plan, yeah.
Yeah. That'll help put it in context for you all.
Thank you. Thank you. And so this year, really saying, there's about eight schools, Luis, that are a part of Phase Two implementation. We had about six to eight last year as well.
School of elementary and high school.
And so, and then we will have, we really are looking at this over three years, that with that final phase being next year and bringing the rest of the schools on and really, so that we have this family partnership plan at all levels and we have those kinds of voice visits and just that consistency and what that looks like in working with our families across all of our schools. The second is to launch that task force that will, one of the things we're hearing a lot about is there seems to be a lot of different communication tools from classroom teacher as well as schools to families and even within maybe sports programs or different things. So can we streamline some of that work? So we'll be engaging in it, yeah, in a task force this year. Everybody's eyes get big, yes, yay.
If you've had several kids in our school district, you know that this gets really complex.
It can. And so with good intentions, people are using a lot of tools, but now it's gotten a little. So we've got options, I guess we can look at it that way and so we can, we can streamline that. So Luis will be leading some of that work. And then finally, really big work this year is to ensure that our parents, we have a tool, excuse me, excuse me. We have a tool within Infinite Campus, that's what IC stands for. Really wanting to make sure that our parents, you know, we don't want to just take for granted that just because we have the tool that everybody, and our students maybe know how to use it, that parents necessarily do and that all parents do. So we really want to make sure that we're providing opportunities to engage our parents in that way and train, train them so that they can really utilize that as a tool to help support their children at home.
And just in a campus is middle school and secondary?
Yes, correct. Middle school and high school.
It's all state.
Well, true.
It's all levels. Yeah, all levels.
So I'm thinking this work that we're doing would be more, our parents would be at the secondary to use that because that is where the grades and those kinds of things are being housed.
Missing assignments.
Yes, missing assignments. So sorry, I'm thinking about this and, but you're right, K to 12, we use the tool in the system, yeah. Okay. And then, so that's Goal One. Do you have any questions on that before we move to Goal Two? Our thoughts or comments?
Were our teachers happy with Infinite Campus? I mean, does it meet their needs in terms of putting in grades? We know that we have the right tool, I guess is what I'm asking.
Yeah, by and large, I would say yes. Are there a few other tools out there that are as robust as Infinite Campus? Yes, we've kind of looked at a few different, they don't do anything significantly different or better than what Infinite Campus already does for us. And so I would say by and large, yes, and sometimes we do have some other tools that come alongside so that it really makes sure that we are able to utilize what's in IC to the best and to maximize that resource.
Most of these tools are designed for secondary, to be fair.
Yes, they are.
They really are. And so they're, the industry is absent of a really good tool for elementary use. And so we do hear often, every year I hear, are we going to look at elementary grading? Are we going to look at elementary, you know, how we manage elementary grades? And, and not just from teachers, but from parents also. And so, but it, but as far as the industry goes, Infinite Campus is probably the strongest tool that is out there and the frontrunner in terms of just interfacing with our other systems as well.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then Goal Two is.
Right. So Goal Two is really that work about engaging our community and continuing to engage them in a positive way. So our Goal Two is to communicate and collaborate external with, I think we're missing a word there, communicate and collaborate with external stakeholders, including business, local government, and community organizations. And.
And there's two basic objectives under that. One is to develop and implement a district-wide plan to partner with businesses, community groups, and individuals. And this was really born out of direct feedback that we got from our building leaders because some schools have a lot of business and community partners and some have none. And there's some that are really good at fostering those partnerships and maintaining those partnerships and there are some that don't even know how to begin. So there's been this sort of this inequity amongst schools that some have all these business partners who do all these things for them and some don't have any really. And so our leaders said, we really need a toolkit of some sort. We need, we need some training around how to develop these partnerships, how to maintain these partnerships. And what's more, most important to us too is that it really is a two-way partnership. So how you really create a true partnership where it's just not always taking or asking for things, but what can we do for this partner as a school community? What can we do to help them? What can we do to, to maintain that as a true partnership? And then it's to do, the second part is to develop and implement a plan for students and staff to contribute to the community. And this is really about community service and volunteerism and trying to find a way to encourage our staff, but maybe also even allow our staff to have a certain amount of hours on contract time to volunteer in our community. We've done this a little bit with, say, well, Project Connect where we've encouraged business, our building leaders to volunteer for that really important community event that really does serve our families mostly. So really looking at those opportunities and then finding a way to do that. So our more, I guess, action plans around that. Our, yeah, our outcomes will, will really be to develop and that's what this year's going to be about, is really trying to develop that school community partnership plan. There's not really any out there, so we're asking, we're getting a little bit of help to develop that. We've done a lot of research on what would be available and we're not really finding anything. So we're going to get some help to develop that and then really give those, those principals and those building leaders and teacher leaders a tool that they can use within their schools to really cultivate those partnerships. We have a lot of willingness in the business community to partner with, with schools, but they also have some expectations about what that looks like. So we just got to make sure that that's communicated clearly. And then another group is working on this volunteerism idea and really working to, Annette's leading it for staff, really working through how that looks, what we do, what opportunities are there in the community, how we facilitate and advertise those opportunities to our staff. And then Anne Ramirez is leading some work around students. What kind of a community service, not necessarily requirement, but, but how do we embed that in our personalized learning plans for students so that they have that feel of what it means to give back to their community and what that true community service means?
Excuse me one minute. So it, you've talked a lot about business partners, but it's far broader than just businesses.
No, it's far broader than that. We talk about community and organization partnerships as well, as you well know, churches, philanthropic organizations, even individuals or small clubs. We have a lot of just small, you know, groups of, of, of different types that want to give back to our schools. So it's not just businesses and that's something else that we need to include. And then this is just the actions I've already pretty much talked about, developing that plan, getting some training around our leaders and then implementing that toolkit for them and then creating and implementing those plans for both students and our staff as well. It's a big work over the next couple of years.
Do you have any questions about Goal Two? That's, that is all of Goal Two in strengthening partnerships.
So I know that, I don't know that it was last year, it might have been the year before, when you started this conversation about the students volunteering. I remember Anne came to the Council of Student Reps and I think there was great interest by the membership then. I'm just kind of curious, you know, because I think that was almost two years ago, if I'm remembering that correctly. It might have been about eight months ago, yeah. When they were starting to do some exploration about that work, yeah. So I'm just curious, is the groups that are, and I think the purpose for her being at that meeting was to get input from the students, what had the sound of them, did they have ideas? Just curious about what that outreach looks like for student groups as far as? Well, that's what really is the big work that Anne's trying to determine because that obviously looks different at every educational level, right? An elementary student is not going to be able to do the kind of same student community service or interaction as a high school student. So what we're looking at is what is appropriate for all those different levels and what's available in the community to facilitate that. So that's the big work that Anne's working on now and the exploration around what that would look like at the different levels.
And staff.
And you know, and it may be more like, you know, students like, like, this is a great example, I was contacted by the Moose Lodge in Evans and they would like to have student performers at this luncheon for seniors every month. And so that's a great opportunity for our schools to go perform there just once during the school year and give back to that community that gives so much to them. So there are opportunities out there, it's just really being creative and thinking about those.
Thank you.
And, and working with staff to find what fits well for staff. Because not every, every teacher who leads an extracurricular group or leads a student group is going to be able to go on a Saturday morning and help, help do yard work or clean up trash or, or do landscaping work. But, you know, Jeremy Hayden can take his football team on a Saturday morning to do that and he will.
That's right.
So it's really just coordinating those pieces and, and really figuring out how can we give to our community, because our community has given so much to us.
Right.
And it's even just participation, you know, all our groups that participate in parades or community events in the community and things like that. But just really trying to codify that in a way and show other schools how they can do that as well.
Right. It's more of a, kind of a documentation process.
Yeah, kind of spreading that love around a little bit.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. So the next section is on climate and culture. And we know this is an important aspect of our work. This is how we sometimes refer to it as the plate, which everything else is on, or some people might refer to it as the water, it's what everybody's swimming in, so however you want to think about it metaphorically. But it is about cultivating that safe and healthy inclusive learning environment for all, embracing our diversity and engaging, engaging all stakeholders. So we know it's, it's about that efficacy. It's that knowing that, that you matter and that you're doing well and you can thrive in this, in your school setting and even in your work setting. So this is, this is a, a good one and a fun one. And so we know there's, this is broken out into two goals. The first goal is around that cultural responsiveness and we think, we've talked a little bit about what that means, that culture is a very big term and it's about who we are as humans and how we show up. And that our children show up in different ways and we want to know them and understand them. So what are we doing? We're cultivating a strong sense of belonging for both our students and staff. And there's that word empowerment and we think about that efficacy part of it. We provide access to and support for, access to and support for. I really like the way that's stated. Learning opportunities so that all of our students again are being college, career and college ready. And then demonstrating those cultural responsive practices throughout the district just so that we're meeting our students where they are and, and who they are. So this, what we're looking at are that students and staff respond, respond with a strong sense of belonging and empowerment on annual surveys. We know that Gallup even, when we think about all those Gallup surveys, that that sense of belonging matters to them. We think about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. This is, this is age-old stuff that we know that, that it matters to our adults and our students that they are, have that sense of belonging and that they know that this is a place for them. And, and that achievement data will improve for students across all of our demographic areas. So really looking at all those aspects. That students respond positively on their student annual survey regarding support and ex, student support and equity and that all staff will be trained in those cultural responsive practices so that they are supportive of all, all of their students. So what is, what do the actions look like? So we're looking at a few actions this year. Again, this is the work of Luis and he is new in this role. This is, well, this isn't new work for us. It is really an opportunity for us to have Luis come us in our district and having some new eyes and being able to, to really step into this work with us. So we'll continue with that leadership support. We know that our leaders need to be, continue to be developed and have the support they need. New leaders as well as returning leaders or new teachers as well as returning teachers and really building on that cultural responsive, responsive practices. The second is around implementing cultural proficiency modules. Now those modules, you've heard us talk about those before, those are really about what is supportive for the operational side of the house. And so that's really, if they want to engage in that conversation and kind of looking at some of those, those supports, this is an option for them and it's that kind of anytime, anywhere type of training support for them. Their schedules are much different. Bus driver's schedule, right? Kitchen staff, those kind of folks just have very different schedules. So we really want that anytime, anywhere kind of support for them in this way. So we'll continue to work on those and really be responsive to what people are wanting and asking for, not saying that they all must or this is what they need, but really having an array of different options of what they are looking for. The third one is continuing the work at the school level in terms of equity teams and support of those equity teams, both in the way of Luis's direct support and the quarterly Equify meetings. So kind of coined a term of Equify. And then integrating culture and climate goals and action steps within the majority of our unified improvement plans this year. So that is a goal where, what that, what that means in terms of culture and climate work and how are they working on that sense of belonging and ensuring that there is that, that sense of efficacy across the district in all of our schools. They really figure out what that means and are pulling that in and you'll see that in terms of the school improvement plans this year. Is there something you would like to add, Luis?
I shared with Dr. Doudary, the rest of our team this afternoon, that this morning I got invited to Greeley West at seven thirty in the morning. And it was great to see the whole entire Greeley West staff focused on equity and cultural responsiveness practices and how to engage the community, how to engage their parents because they have parentage conferences coming up. And so they were telling, you know, me that they have low attendance over the years and try to increase the attendance, increase the involvement, increase the engagement. So to see an entire staff, high school, comprehensive high school, really talking about and then splitting up in small groups, they were chatting in name of a team that they're on for equity work, cultural responsiveness work was, I was glad to see that because that's how you can really move a whole community of 2,000 kids is from the teachers themselves and the administration working together, how to really come up with ideas. We had, so I was in a team, a community engagement, parent involvement team that had some really great ideas and it wasn't me or Amanda's ideas, it was the teachers' ideas. And that's how you really can get that powerful movement going to support all kids. Cultural proficiency work is about all of our kids. So it's amazing to have that, to be a part of that Greeley West this morning. So that's an example of Dr. Doudary's talk about, that's an action for me and action for our district in September, September.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. That was just powerful work. Yes, that's right. We're at the end of Goal One. Thank you. Yes.
Can you go back to the slide that talks about the surveys?
This one?
Yes.
I believe. That's one of the outcomes.
Yeah. So I just, I wonder about this and I know that there are a lot of actions out there that, and practices that are in place. When we say that students will respond positively to an annual student survey regarding student support and equity, I am just, I'm just cautious about the student participation in surveys and wondering in the action plans, and Luis might know more about this as well, but at a school level, there are other actions that are happening at the school that are ensuring that kids are feeling that support and equity. And I'm just one, a survey doesn't represent every child and every child's feelings. So I'm just curious about an example of something that might be in place at a building that would be in addition to or, in addition to a survey response.
And let me just start first with saying, this is the tool we have to measure district-wide.
Right.
And so, you know, we have, we need a measurement district-wide because we're looking at data district-wide. And so this is the tool we have and we agree with you that there's lots of other ways to learn about how students are doing and feeling and thinking and being. And so part of the equity work is, many of the schools do student panels and so they actually hear the story of students, listen to the students. They, they do student listening sessions and, and student, small groups to listen to students, to gather that feedback from students. You know, we go out to council student reps, we go out to the health and wellness, the students on the health and wellness committee and get their feedback and hear their input. So their, the student voice is where it's most powerful for us. And I think at least once every year, we've had a student panel or student participants with our principals and district leadership team, sharing with us, you know, their experiences and their stories. So I think there's, you know, when you really put student voice to it, it, it really matters. But I will tell you, Ms. Papas, that we did see out of the student data, we saw some shifts and we could point to why we thought we saw that shift, especially district-wide. And so it's, you know, there's some value in it and, and I hear you that, that it's a blunt instrument when it comes to looking at 23,000 students in a system. Do you want to talk about what else we do, Stacy?
I think you, I was going to actually comment as well on just student voice is where that's at. And our teachers being trained to be able to, you know, and that's kind of, this really couples nicely, what I would add is, the work that we're doing with the family, the strengthening partnerships, that when we think about the partnership work that we're doing and that what that action plan is all about at the school level and across all of our, in all of our schools, it's about making sure that we're looking at what our parents saying, what our family's saying, what our students telling us and how do we respond accordingly so that we are really meeting their needs and bringing them in. This is not something we do to, it is something that we are doing with and alongside. And yes, and then I would just say that this is just one piece of data, perception data, albeit, where they are telling us in the best way to where we can ask all of them. Because in panels and asking, you know, asking individual kids, we get a sense of that, but you're not really able to really say to all students, what are you, having an opportunity to say, how do you feel about that? I think the other thing that I would tell you that I see a lot in the unified improvement plans and when I talk with principals is, once they're getting this data, turning it around into actions and then monitoring those actions to make sure that at the classroom level, they are seeing results that then should impact in the next survey, but they're not waiting for that survey to see, are those actions making a difference? Are they really ensuring that students have that sense of belonging, that they say, this is my space that I want to learn in, that I have, that I have friends at school, that I have somebody who cares about me at school and that they are feeling, feeling that, that sense of belonging.
And this is the Panorama survey, yes?
It is the Panorama, this is the survey tool.
Is there a way for us to get a copy of it, just to see what the questions are?
Yes, you can. We do have that available. We could give that to you all and we do, I'll give that to our parents, asking for that if they, if they would like that. So we actually, I'll get that to Dr. Pilch.
I did get one student's feedback on the Panorama survey and they just said that it's the same questions every year, so they, they like zone out and just answer it the way they always have, that it, you know, they just
Well, at least they're consistent.
But that they like stopped thinking about like the answer. Yeah, I'm curious to see the questions, just to, just to, I guess, judge for myself if I think it's a good tool or not, but yeah, I'm just curious.
And the questions are the same intentionally so that we are measuring year-to-year, you know, in terms of how we are doing. We have added some questions over time. We are able to add and we have added some over time.
We did just add the, and it'll, it'll happen at the winter is the bully, you know, bully prevention. And that's part of state law now. And so we were able to embed that right in with the survey rather than trying to do yet one other survey.
Another survey.
Because we had to, we have to do that. So that's an example. But pretty consistently, they are the same by design.
Yeah.
To your point.
Thanks. I really just wanted to have us be able to hear the, some of the explicit things that are happening in schools and the
Yeah, I think, you know, I think especially with parents, our, our survey response is still not, not as high as we would like to see it be with parents, as well as with our staff. The survey response is not as high as we would like. Students are captive audience, so we get a pretty high-level survey response. Now whether they're just going through and filling in bubbles, saying the same thing they said last year, we don't know. But at least we get a higher number of students who participate or high percentage of participation with our students. And parents can opt students out of, of surveys and have them not participate in the survey.
That's work that our Jenny Jensen leads. That's work that our Jenny Jensen leads. Jenny, do you have kind of a sense for this, about approximately how many opt-outs that...
Well, we were just collecting the data now, so that not all of our schools have sent that out to families yet, but we're seeing about the same number of opt-outs as we...
So it's a few, but the majority do take.
Can I just add also, Dr. Papas, you know, I agree. You know, it's not the most personal way to get information from a child, but at the same time, because it's something to work possible.
That's my point, yeah.
Because it's some kind of direction.
No, I don't disagree with it at all. I just wanted for us all to be able to hear some of the other things that are happening in addition to the surveys.
So typically what we, what we guide leaders to do on all of these surveys, that if they're getting a pattern of information on their survey results, that they go back to those two groups of students and say, you know, we heard this on the Panorama Survey, let's dig into this a little bit more. So what is it, what might this mean? And to do the same thing with the staff, when the Panorama, or their survey results have declined in an area, to go to their staff and say, I saw decline in this area, or I saw an increase in this area. What, let's talk about this. What does this mean? And what is behind this? And to peel that back and go a little deeper to understand that survey data.
Yeah. Thank you. Well, thank you. The second goal in culture and climate is around supporting that social and emotional wellbeing of students and staff. So just being, you know, being that supported, knowing that they can and do have the supports at school, to be academically successful, so that we are able to take care of any of those needs that they may have, so that they can be, you know, perform at high levels academically. So supporting this, and not just with students, but also thinking about our staff. We know that we've had to really be mindful of that, and most organizations are, small and large. So we're a large organization with a lot of adults, and so we want to make sure that we're supporting them as well, in meaningful ways. So the first, there are a couple of objectives in this. This is work that Mr. Gribble, thank you for being here as well, all of the team, this is really work that he leads alongside Kristen Dalton, and she is our social-emotional learning facilitator, so, or coordinator, rather. So there are a couple of objectives, and the first one is to develop and implement that district-wide plan to each, and embed social and emotional learning practices in classrooms across all schools. So this is really about the curriculum that was adopted a few years ago and has been implemented in all of our schools. So each school now has action steps that will address that social and emotional learning in their annual improvement plan. So what, again, it's much like I spoke to earlier with the cultural proficiency, it's what are you working on? How does that look already? It's not something that everybody will do X, but it's saying, if this is the work, what makes sense in your setting, and how can you further that and support that for your students and staff to make sure that their, that social and emotional wellbeing is present. So they have action steps to make, in terms of what makes sense. And then that students will respond positively, that they are supported socially and emotionally, again, through that annual student survey, again, Panorama is the tool, but it's not something that we're just making, that rather it's been vetted and supported that way. So the actions that we have this year is that really 100% of our schools will achieve that, ensuring that an action step of some kind is in their Unified Improvement Plan, again, like I mentioned before, that makes sense for their school climate and the work that they're doing. And that the second one is, again, like I talked about, that social-emotional learning curriculum, not only implementing that, but also including that digital citizenship, bully prevention, and development of that system-wide. So those things are embedded within. Sorry. And your development, system-wide.
It's youth development.
Whose?
Youth.
Oh, youth development. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gribble. Objective two then is developing and implementing that plan to improve staff's social and emotional wellness. And that staff, as a result, if we do that well, that they will respond positively, that they truly are being supported in meaningful ways in the workplace. So what does that look like for us this year? It's providing that training for staff. An SOS website is Systems of Support website. So that has been developed over time. It did undergo some revamping this year, and so we, just to really amp up what those services are, there's a lot of community support. So it's not about, I'm going to support them directly. It's how can we get supports in place for any of our staff that may need additional support to be effective at the workplace with external partnerships that we may have and that kind of thing, get them, get them connected with that. We also have, looking at Megan, within our benefits package, more supports within our benefits package in this area, so providing them the opportunities to be able to engage in that. And again, that's kind of to that second bullet and third bullet of what does that have to have, you know, ensuring that they have meaningful individual self-care and opportunities to do so, and aligning with the worksite wellness opportunities. That is kind of more a part of the work that Megan and team lead as well.
You all may remember that this started with some of our work in negotiations, and then also with some staff coming into the boardroom to share a desire for more social emotional supports for the adults as well. And we've got to have healthy adults to have healthy kids in the classroom.
Yes. Thank you. That's the last one there. I'm sorry, I thought there was one more action speech.
So with that being said, and how does, you know, the conversations that happened prior to making this part of this plan, we have, we've been able to provide additional supports in buildings, social workers, counselors, and that, just additional staffing. Is there, is it part of our culture, our expectation, our understanding, that if I'm a staff member and I'm experiencing some, something in my school day, is there the opportunity for me to access something from a social worker, go to somebody in the building for support?
So that is not the model.
No.
And it happens all the time. So the model is not intended to have social workers in the buildings for the adults. The social workers are there for the children. And I will tell you that social workers, school psychs, school counselors do counseling, do support services to staff all of the time, and have throughout my career.
Same as my career too, so that's what I was just curious about.
And it happens, it happens a lot. They are often a better person to say to a staff member, here's the information for the employee assistance program, rather than, than, you know, you might not come to your principal with this, and you might go to the school counselor, the school social worker. And so then they, they're really good about, here's the employee assistance program information, can I help you to make the phone call? Can I help you to get online to schedule somebody? They do not do ongoing therapy with staff. But there is, it happens a lot.
Right. And I was thinking more of just, you know, some of those basic things that happen, you know, I'm just, I'm struggling with a student today, can you give me five minutes just to help me process through this? And I'm just, I was just curious about how often that happened, if it happened, the expectation about that.
Oh, I think it probably, it happens a lot. Tom is nodding to suggest, I think it happens a lot. And I think it's an added benefit of the resource of having school counselors and social workers. And you all know that we didn't have a social worker or counselor in all of our buildings, and certainly at the elementary.
Not at the elementary.
It was very scant. And as a result of a combination of counselor core grant dollars, a combination of ESAR dollars and mill levy override dollars, we've been able to have at least a half-time social worker in every building and at least a full-time counselor in every building.
That's correct.
I think we still have one school that has not filled their counseling position.
Two, I believe. We have two schools that have that. We have a few more than that in terms of social worker positions. But we're, every school now has at least a social worker or a counselor. And then additionally, all of our schools have a North Range therapist. So they work, obviously they are with North Range, but they work in partnership in our schools and alongside our folks. So that has been incredibly helpful and an amazing partnership.
They're housed in the school?
They are housed in the school.
Yeah. And that's a partnership where we pay part for those therapists, and the North Range also contributes back to us. So it's an amazing relationship, and I serve on the North Range Board, and every time they do an update on the school-based therapist, which is what they're called, they talk about their very first therapist they had at Central, and they were in a closet like with the boiler. And they show a picture of it. They show a picture.
We've come a long ways.
And we've come a long way since then, and I think, you know, that's been well over a decade, probably two decades ago, when North Range first brought a therapist into one of our schools.
Very fortunate to have this resource. And again, it's all guiding back to if our teachers and our students are, have this sense of belonging and are feeling safe and secure, they will thrive and be academically thriving and proficient. So this is all part of that big-picture work. That's why we call it the plate or the water, whichever one. I'll go back to that. Don't lose sight of that. All right, we are down to our fourth focus, fourth and final, and I have three colleagues, Kent and Megan and Annette, who are going to come forward. And I think I'm actually going to exit stage left, if that's okay, or they can go over there. You want to do that?
No, you can come over here, and they can stay there.
Okay, good idea. So that you guys can operate this, and I think we start with Megan.
All right. So operational and organizational effectiveness really around innovation, transparency, and accountability to the community, to measurable outcomes and continuous improvement. So Goal One is around aligning district resources to meet the needs of all students. And Objective One is specific to financial resources, so leveraging local, state, and national financial resources to provide equitable and quality learning environments for all students. I'm going to skip the outcomes because our actions speak to the outcomes. The first action is to continue to ensure that we obtain a clean audit opinion, which is, of course, our number-one goal every year. We also want to maintain the transparency with financial information, so that all is in the financial transparency link on our website. If you ever want to see any kind of information about the finances of the district, you can go there. We need to develop a balanced budget proposal to bring to you for next school year. And along with that, we need to consider the impacts of the change in federal funding. So this is the last year of our ESAR money. We need to consider that we're coming to the end of our bond funds, and we also need to leverage our mill levy override. So we have a lot of things that we need to kind of fit together this year.
Then Objective Two is implement the Facility Master Plan, which includes all maintenance, renovation, and school replacement projects recommended throughout the school district. And you've heard me talk about the Facility Master Plan many times. That is what set the guidelines specifically for the 2019 bond, but then also has a backbone in it for the next two bonds for us to work toward. And so outcomes, to implement school boundary adjustments identified in the 2021 Boundary Study. We needed to do this because if you remember, Toynton, which came about as the bond, was a new school, had no boundary. So if you're going to create a boundary for a school, you're obviously going to affect boundaries for other schools. So we went through that process and giving Toynton a boundary, and then also taking some kids off of some schools that were a little bit overcrowded. But then also in the bond, the Madison School, which was a K-5, is now pre-K-8, so adjusting those boundaries for those, especially the 6'8" side. And then in addition, we did some boundary work in the middle of the city where we kind of had some jagged edges that really didn't make any sense and was a pain to look at. It was just, so we cleared all that stuff up, and some of that was for safety, so we didn't have kids walking across 10th Street when a simple boundary change moved them to another school. And then complete all projects outlined in the 2019 bond issue. We're coming up on our four-year anniversary. By this summer, we will have completed 25 schools toward that, so that's pretty awesome, including additional projects with bond proceeds as approved by the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. And you've seen me report on a lot of those. And then this kind of remaining thing that we have to do is complete the final phase of the, of the bond projects, or I'm sorry, the boundary shift projects, do the opening of Madison, Toynton, and pre-K-8 schools. So if you remember, Toynton opened up as pre-K-6, and then 17, and 18. And, you know, that work there affects our student information department, communications department, transportation department, has to stay on top of that. So that's been, it's worked out pretty well, but there's a lot of people that those boundary shifts affect, not to mention the principals. And then this year's action, really beginning the final phase of our 2019 bond issue. So a year from now, these should be done, along with the 25 schools that will be done by this summer, that we'll have completed. And so really, we will be at the completion of our bond project. What we'll do after that is, we will have some bond funding probably trickling down through the end, and we'll see what we have at the end to see what else we could do. But that is, that will be every building, school building in the district will be touched with a bond.
So do you want to talk about Goal One, maybe, before we go about with those two?
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward, huh?
All right. So in Goal Two, you know, the, all the work centers around finding that talented person that wants to make a difference, that is passionate about living in our community or working in our community and supporting kids. That's the work that goes into all of this goal area. It starts with recruitment and hiring and retention. And the first objective that I'm going to talk about out of those three is really around that recruitment plan. It builds this diverse workforce and is representative of people that live here in Greeley and in Evans. And then what we look at and what we see as success out of this outcome is that we have a increased candidate pool. And in today's day and age, that's hard to get, is to have an increased candidate pool. But we're working for that for all positions, not just our certified staff. We're also looking at that workforce in the operational side as well. And then we want to increase people of color who are interviewed in our, in our, all of our interview positions, interviewed positions across the district. So the actions that help us get to that success is really around getting to those universities and workforce centers regionally, across the state, or even across the, across the country. That focuses on recruitment of candidates of color. We're looking at the university for candidates that are in unique programs, that are particular to, that highlight candidates of color. Other actions that we have for this goal or for this objective is that we revise strategies. We're hearing that relocation services are a big deal. We need to be able to help support our candidates as they come forward in order to get here. We need to be able to support them. So we're looking at strategies for, to support them. The other thing is, as part of understanding what's and who we're interviewing, is that we're tracking our, all of our interview, our interview pools, to make sure that we've got highly qualified candidates in there, that they're licensed appropriately, and then, of course, that there are people of color who we are interviewing, those that have been in these schools. So Objective Two, then moving from recruiting to hiring, we look at the representatives at, from our, not only our community, but particularly in our community, that are qualified and have a diverse background. Annually, this is our outcome. That is what we see as success, and then, and this is increasing employees who are people of color, reflecting the demographics that are in our Greeley-Evans community. Then the actions that support that outcome, that we're really looking for in our success is that we are analyzing our community demographics in both Greeley and Evans, and we're looking particularly how to attract local talent to then help them get to a promotion, get promoted into higher-level positions. We're also revising the district application process. I want to say we're blowing the whole thing up. Christina and I have talked about that. We're getting it ready for all different employee groups, and we're really making a full shift in the way that we ask people to apply for us and for positions with us. Objective Three, moving from not only recruitment, but then hiring, and now into retention. So once we get these people to come and work with us here in District Six, and they're passionate about our students and about our workforce, we've got to figure out a way to retain them, keep them here. We're looking at for that outcome is to perform higher than the state average, not just at the state average, and always looking back at the state, but really increasing every year to have our folks retained and stay with us in District Six. And then we need to increase the retention rates for all of our employee groups, not just the ones that the state looks at. We're looking at everybody. How do we retain them? I liked her, Dr. Pilch, talking about, no one is, everyone is irreplace, no one is, everyone is, everyone is irreplaceable. That's right. Everyone's irreplaceable.
Got to keep them all.
That's another way to say it.
And so the actions that support that success for us in that outcome are continually reviewing that retention data. We just pulled our retention numbers today. We got our final numbers for all of our departments and all of our school sites. And then we share that information with them so that they know what their rates are. We provide information from exit surveys to, first of all, to cabinet, and then also to other departments and to school leadership, so that they can understand why people stay and why people then they actually leave the district. And then other actions that we review, as I said, we had, we developed, I did mention that we do reflective conversations with leadership, we, throughout the... We, throughout the year, when we meet to talk about staffing with our principals and departments, we will talk to them about what that survey data looks like and what, what are their reflections about it? What can they, what can they think of? What are insights into why people have left their building or left their department?
So Nat, I'm sorry. John was just telling me that one of our folks accepting tonight won't be here. So I got distracted. I apologize. Did you mention that we have hired a consultant to actually do interviews of employees who left? Would you please talk about that?
Yes, I sure will.
And this is a key action to really understanding why people have left us so that we can address that and thereby better retain people.
Right. We have, we asked, I asked another HR person that I know, a consultant, who's a consultant, to come in and interview. Because I have done those interviews over the course of years to find out why people have left or why they stay. That's important, even more important is knowing and understanding why people stay so that we can replicate that across the district. And so, but in it, what I've found is I get lots of good information. I've presented this every year after year and how exciting they are to want to be here or this is why I left. I'm not feeling like I'm getting the best deep level information. So I thought if I did a, had a consultant come in and do this work, they might be more honest with them. Sometimes they, they're not sure about wanting to talk to the HR lady. And so that's why I thought if I have a third-party person come in and do that work, then we'll get, we'll see what we get, we might get more. So she's going to do two different rounds of the stay interviews and then she'll do exit interviews as well. And then we have exit survey information already that we've gotten, we've received from all the people that participated last year. And I'll share more about that in next month in the presentation.
Can you talk just a little bit, go back to the recruitment and just give a quick overview of what's happening right now in District Six? I know we have the teacher cadet program at the CTE Center, and I think there's a teacher cadet program at Greeley Central. So how is that all?
So we have, one of our directors is particularly, that's one of her tasks that she works on is building this pipeline. So it's not just a pipeline that happens at, in teaching. We are trying to build a pipeline across the, across the district in any of those kinds of programs. So the mentor program has really been given some good, good candidates to, like IT or to nutrition or to custodial. We've seen some of them, and finance has actually experienced that we've used them. Those are places that we can try to build a capacity for either our students to learn and grow and do something else, but then could also come back and work with us. We have the pipeline at the, at the middle level. They, what they've done is started surveying middle schools so that they, middle school students, so that they can make a determination, gee, do I really want to be a teacher? Have I thought about being a teacher? And so the school will then celebrate the, these students that are identified in this pipeline when they celebrate teachers, when they do teachers of the week, or when they, they pull out those students and help them to learn and grow in that profession. Whether they stay or not, not so sure. But the other thing too is that we do the teacher, Project Teacher Find in the spring. And so you've seen us come bring candidates forward. And we only have as many scholarships as we can, we can get from UNC. But we interview a number of candidates to get that scholarship.
You know, we've learned, as I reported to you all last month or last meeting, we've learned that we, we have to open our doors in different ways. So, you know, inviting in and welcoming the teachers who have come from the Philippines on J-1 visas. And so that's new for us. Last year was new. We tested it out. It went pretty well. And so we expanded it this year. But we know we've got to be more open-minded and, and willing to try every avenue possible to recruit folks, everybody, I mean, everybody has a shortage. It's certainly not unique to District Six. So we're competing nationwide.
What's exciting about that, having the teachers from the Philippines come is that when they, the two came, they had such a successful experience and the school just wrapped their arms around these two, that they told their friends and so on and so on. And so Christina has mentioned before that there will be more people that are coming because these agencies here, oh Greeley, will take our candidates. And we have found that they are so happy and so excited about being here.
And they've done well.
Yeah. But we're going to expand that.
How long is that visa?
Three years for the opportunity to expand it to five. They have to apply for the expansion both years four and years five. We're also doing a little bit of exploration around teacher apprentices, which were just approved by the state legislators this last year. So we're kind of in the research phases of that at the moment. But that's one more avenue to go through.
That's very different. Not, not many school districts will do this. We'll take this on.
And that would be for current staff members. For example, if somebody who's in an instructional assistant role or a special education assistant role, who is already working with students and then being able to do schooling on top of that, in addition to that with some, with some assistance, financial assistance for the school district.
What's the cost of bringing them? Is it cheaper than onboarding a local teacher? I'm just curious about the dollars.
Do you want to address that, Christina?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
The J-1 visa?
There really is no difference in cost. The, the onboarding costs and all of that are the same. It kind of gets spread out over time because we begin working with these teachers before they have social security numbers, before they have any of that. So there may be a little bit additional cost just on the, really on the payroll side of things because they have to make sure we have paid them while they're working, even if they haven't got their social security numbers.
So time, the cost is time. Human resource.
Yeah. And we spend a lot of time communicating back and forth with visa agencies and things like that. But as far as hard dollars, there really is no difference.
But they're typically, their agency is paying for them to come.
Yeah, we do not sponsor visas. We work with candidates who have a sponsorship already, an external sponsorship.
The cost of, of that, of sponsorship is significant. And we have said that we wouldn't do that. But people, these agencies come forward and say, we'll take care of all of that for you. If you could just get them and you'll hire them. And so we.
And are they experienced or new teachers?
Depends. Both, but most of them are experienced.
They have to have at least, I believe it's three years of experience teaching in order to qualify even for a J-1 visa. It's either two or three.
I was, I was surprised by the level of experience, the numbers of years these teachers have taught when I met them and years.
I think the least experienced teacher we have is five years and the most experienced teacher we have is over 30.
Yeah.
They make very little in their home country. And then they come here and then they get all of the years of experience that we would grant a teacher. And so the salary that they get is, they're so excited about that. And it just, it just makes them, not just the salary, but just the opportunity. They are just so grateful over and over. They told Dr. Pilch, they told me, they've told Christina how excited they are and humbled to be here and working with our children. Thank you.
If any other I-2030 questions in general or feedback for us or wonders, worries?
Well, thank you for, for bringing this to us. It's, it's great to get this update. And this is the work of the district. And so I greatly appreciate it. And Dr. Pilch, I would ask you, looking at this, and I think I heard just a different sense of urgency around retention. And we've spent a while now talking about recruitment. Is this the, I don't want to say the most important work because it's all important. But I mean, is this the challenge for us for the next few years and then the environment that we're facing in education?
That's a great question, President Matthews. I do find myself talking more and more about the importance of retention. And mostly because we are investing significantly in employees when we get them here and training them deeply and, you know, establishing relationships and helping them to acculturate to District Six. And then if we lose them and we lose all of that to another school district or to another profession, we've lost significantly. And so I do think it's, it is a big rock. You know, I, there's big rocks in all of these areas for me. That is a very big rock that I think we have to move and we have to move in a way that we haven't moved it before. And, and I think we can. I mean, we, we came up with some very creative ideas in transportation to hire and retain bus drivers. And I think, you know, there's some things you can do. It takes resources to do all of this, as you all know. And so the other big rock is really managing the resources and, and being able to manage that loss of ESER fundings with, with the work that we need to do here in District Six and the pieces we want to keep from the ESER work. And so that, you know, the finances are a big piece of all of this to get to student learning and achievement. Super excited about the new curriculum. I feel like finally, after, so what are we, seven years into our Mill Levy override? Six, nine, six into our Mill Levy override? We finally have updated curriculum across the entire system, K through 12. So finally, we, we have the content, we have the training, we have the expertise to deliver on, on what our community expects from us academically. And so I think as long as we continue to maintain that and continue to maintain our technology. Technology is constantly changing. And so we're going to have some additional demands there over time. Those first Chromebooks we bought six years ago on the Mill Levy override are already being replaced. And so, you know, Chromebook, the life of a Chromebook is about five years. And so there's, those needs are significant in order to keep the work going here in the system. And then of course, Stacy called the water, the climate and culture work. If we can't do all these other things, we're not going to be able to maintain the culture that, that makes us a place where people want to work and people want to be and, and come to and have it be a destination district, which we feel like we have become. And we are certainly highly competitive up and down the front range for, for folks, you know. And that is not the reason for our teacher shortage or other shortages. I mean, it is, the reason for the shortage is that there is a national shortage. There is a national shortage of people in education, of people in the education field. So it's, you know, I think a couple of years ago, we really started this systems support conversation. I think that's really big work, of course, still, that we're supporting our staff and our staff are able to support our students so that students are in a good place to learn and teachers are in a good place to teach. And, but I, you know, I feel like it's all here. And when you get behind this, literally there are hundreds of pages of action plans behind this that the team is focused on every single day. And I'm so proud of the people we've hired in District Six and the leadership we have at the cabinet level leading this work. I mean, you, you didn't hear from everybody on cabinet, but everybody's fingers are in this. And I'm just so proud of, of our leadership and what we've done and yet what we still will do and need to do as we look forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, guys?
Thanks, team.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We're now to our debrief. So Ms. Mash, would you lead off?
Thank you so much for all of this information. I-2030 is a long ways away. So obviously, we have lots of incremental steps to get to, to all of those goals. So thank you for, for giving us the, the update. And I think just the, the phrase that I'm taking away is destination district. That is, that's just fabulous. That's what we are.
Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, it just, it always blows my mind how much thought and effort and, and strategy and just all-around dedication that goes into everything you guys do on this I-2030. It's daunting. It's, it seems like a, I mean, I don't, I don't know, like if, if the general public realizes that the amount of, I mean, if you put this in, printed it out, it'd be mountains of paper, right? It's, it's a, it's a huge, it's a huge commitment that you guys have come up with and to, to lead our district in that direction. And it's just impressive every time, every time we get an update just to see kind of what, what we're working on and where we're headed. So thank you guys for all your hard work. It's, it's, it's amazing, honestly. So excited for the fall and everything that that brings too, so.
Dr. Camus Spitzey?
Yeah, so like I've, I keep saying, the last 10 months being on the board, it's just been refreshing to hear words like equity and representation and people of color brought up so much. And in I-2030, I just heard those words over and over again. So again, so proud that it's on the forefront of the minds of our cabinet and our leadership. And things that stood out, well, the destination district. I was looking into the, that Greeley Tribune article written by Morgan McKenzie that said that Colorado is 49th out of 50 states in starting salaries for teachers. And I was like, is that true? Like, that sounds terrible. And so I was fact-checking her this weekend. And it is, it is true. Colorado, their starting salary is about $37,000 on average. District Six is now $48,000. So I was so proud that, yes, while Colorado-wide, that salary is dismal, we in District Six have really tried to improve that. And then, so that's for starting salary. Then the average teacher salary in Colorado ranks about 25th. So we're not that bad when you like average all the teacher salaries. But, so that stood out. Other things, I would love more information. I know I kept asking questions. I didn't want to go over too much on time. But if we could get more information on the Filipino teacher program and just.
We're going to actually bring a program to the board meeting with them.
Okay, that's great. Just curious what schools they're in, what the principals think about it, all those details. And yes, I, I loved hearing about building more partnerships and equity between schools and their communities, that some schools have a million partnerships and some schools have none. I'm, I'm a liaison at Chaplo and there is a plethora of business partnerships. I get to eat wing shack every time there's a parent-teacher conference. It's great. But yes, we would love that for all of our schools. But yes, thank you for, those of you who've been on the board a long time and saw all this I-2030, you know, the goals and this, and building all this strategy for all that groundwork and foundational work that you guys have laid for us to continue for how many more years? We're at seven more years?
Ms. Pappas?
Well, I appreciated the information tonight. And just to piggyback off of Brenda's comment, just flashing back eight years ago, sitting in this room, and I think that we just need to remember that the board at the time made that decision to start this planning for the strategic plan before Dr. Pilch was hired. And then Dr. Pilch, under her leadership of course, was able to get I-2020 with a collaborative effort with the board at the time as well as district leadership. And so it has been, it has been a very intentional process. And what I appreciate most of all is that we have just, the focus of this district has made, it has stayed on the strategic plan. And that is because of the leadership of Dr. Pilch. And, but just kudos to the board for having that foresight and vision of, yeah, we really need this to happen, so.
Thank you for saying that, Terry. Because I was thinking that, you know, as, as you guys were commenting, was that this really started with the Board of Education in 2015. And that's how this all began. And they laid the groundwork for this work and then worked with us to make it happen.
Thank you.
And I would just echo those, those comments though, that, you know, a lot of organizations have a strategic plan and it's on a shelf and nobody really knows what it does. And we know that anytime we get brought to anything, it's going to be tied back to the strategic plan. And, and the work is working this plan. And so greatly appreciated and thank you for the update.
Can I just add one more comment? What opportunity will Taylor and Rob have to get this information as well?
Yeah, what Stacy and I talked about today is just reaching out to them in an effort to try to schedule a meeting with each of them or with them together or each of them to just really walk through it all with them.
And we're all video too.
And they can watch the video. Great.
All right. Well, it is 5:34. So we are, we're going to adjourn and we'll see everyone back in our business meeting at 6 o'clock.